All right. It being the top of the hour, I will call today's meeting, the zoning board appeals to order. We're getting sorry, apologies for not having the last meeting, but as I think the message has been passed along, we had we had lost all power on the street. And I didn't really feel comfortable with my kids alone when it was like 12 degrees outside. But that so be it. In the administrative items, we've got one set of minutes to review. So they've been the ones from January 6th, that last meeting.
Michael, do you have papers? I'd like to pick them up from downstairs.
There's still downstairs.
I'll go down. Sure. Anybody else need a copy?
Can we read some edits already provided by Andy?
Yeah.
One edit.
Yeah. For the little thing. I don't think I've got any edits that have not been in attendance. But otherwise, I'll leave it open for anyone who's got any other changes on other pages wanting to.
Also welcome Maria, as being a member. Oh, you got that.
Later on. Patience, my dear patience.
Did you bring the cake?
I thought she brings the cake.
The rules changed.
I didn't have to do that because I joined during the pandemic, so I just kind of eat by myself in my kitchen.
So make a motion that we approve meeting minutes as edited.
Second. I have a motion at second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, accepting the minutes as amended?
Right.
Motion passes. All right. In terms of correspondence, we only have one, which is the notice of public hearing for stowaway groups from the conservation commission. Not sure if anyone has any comments or concerns about that. There was a decision in one of the legal matters that we've been involved in that's not on the agenda, but I'm just noting it, that it will be distributed most likely prior to the next meeting. And so there's. I don't think there's any need to discuss anything related to it, but if there is, talk to Michael and we can determine if we need to enter into exactly the session. Make the decision at that time. Any, this will be the last time this is on the agenda, so all of a sudden, are there any updates?
Not on the agenda.
Was it removed?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to get the draft. My bad. All right. In that case, just to note that Ruth stepped down as being a member and was reappointed as an associate member. And Maria was appointed as a member, so congratulations. Otherwise, I just have a couple of items to discuss. I will note that these are the three items under the discussion. Review the draft policy for special permits and variances is on me. I've not got to that, so I'm going to ask that that get moved to the next meeting. Also because I think it's great light for that meeting anyway, so it gives us something to talk about. Otherwise, we've got the revised draft of the ZBA rules and the discussion on zoning for sheds. I'm happy to take them out of order. Someone's got a deep burning desire to talk about one of these first. Okay, well, we'll take them out of there then. Why don't we take a review of the revised draft, ZBA, and ZBA rules and regulations? Michael, is there anyone to identify? Open it up?
So I've made a few edits to the rules and regulations based on our discussion at the last meeting. Those edits are in red. Other than that, I have not received any individual comments from anyone regarding the amendments made, so I guess it would make sense for the board just to review it. And if it's good to go, we can host a public hearing regarding the rules at the next meeting.
On 63, red line you put in there. You made what? Oh, 63, I got it. Okay. Yep. Exist non-conforming structures or lots? How about on lots per se? Is it or on?
Will not be substantially more than the existing non-conforming structure or lot. And you're suggesting that should be end?
On.
Or on?
Or on lot?
Well, okay.
Hold on. If this never finds the proposed accessory apartment is not more detrimental to the existing non-conforming structure or lot. I think that's okay.
The lot could be non-performing or not, if it's doesn't make any difference. So we're not discussing the lots non-performing, we're discussing accessory apartment.
It would be one or the other. Any non-conforming lot would be subject to this. It might make it clear to the public that either way, you have one that's non-performing.
Right, but this is about the apartment and not the lot. That's where it's the physical building, not the dimensions on the lot.
In section 8.1, it says that if it is does not comply with section four, then it comes to this floor. And section four is the dimensional requirements. So the lot could be.
Maybe it comes if the is a lot non-performing?
So any, as the bylaws are written now, any non-conforming lot would first, if someone wants an accessory apartment on it, they would go to the building commissioner. If the building commissioner determines that it could, that it would increase the non-conformity of the lot, it would come to the ZBA. If it doesn't increase the non-conformity, he can issue a special, he can issue a building permit.
It could be a non-performing lot that he makes the decision on.
Yes.
So the lot being non-performing doesn't enter into the picture.
The way the bylaws were written, that the first step is to look if that's non-performing or not.
The building or the lot? Both?
You have to look at both.
So if the buildings, yeah. If the building inspector determines that the lot is non-conforming, but the dual, the apartment is conforming, it comes here anyway?
It would not come here if it's conforming or if it doesn't increase.
So if the lot is a non-conforming lot, but the building is conforming, it's his jurisdiction. If the lot is non-conforming and the building is non-conforming, we're going to see it.
Yes, and not in every scenario, because if it's within the building itself, it wouldn't come to this board. But if it's a detached one, it would likely have to go to this board.
So it's really about the intensity of the non-conformance to the building?
The external intensity, though, right?
Yes.
The building, yeah, right, the external, you're right. Okay, thank you.
Just a typo in 6.3, first paragraph. Section should be plural. We're standing to sections.
Sections is the title of the paragraph. Section 3.2. Section 3.9, 2.9.7. Just so we get stated in the bylaw. Anyone plural, if that's.
Well, Maria's checking. There's another typo in the last paragraph. 1234, fourth line down, accessory apartment, apartments lowercase, should be capitalized.
The other thing I thought we were going to put in here was our introduction that gives for special permits. How we're going to conduct the meeting. As an appendix or something?
Yeah, that's what I haven't quite finished yet. Oh, okay, so we're going to put that up. We're going to talk about that later. Okay. That's my, that's my summary. Sure, you've been from the only red line part is that. Is that section?
Red line, June, June.
Yes.
And then as a separate, I think there were a few red lines in this document.
Red?
This document.
Yeah. I'll give everyone a little bit to just to look through the the document, yeah, additional requirements, procedural rules, and application forms, just to see if anyone's got any additional comments, questions, concerns, edits.
Michael, they highlighted amended through, annotated in the footer. What does that mean?
So I'll just, it's highlighted, so I remember to go back. So at the public hearing, one, if the board closes the hearing and adopts the rules, I'll write amended through and that date. And then effective would be the next meeting.
Okay.
And it's just a reminder to myself.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, I have a curiosity. In 324, this document, I would request additional information.
Yes.
I'm just curious. Which is included, I'll limit to a stormwater report. Is there a reason why that's the only thing that I could call that for?
I think that was a small edit that I didn't put in there, but at the last meeting, we discussed. I asked if there was any criteria for a stormwater report. And we put it in the appendix as a requirement, but something that you could waive if you wanted to request it. So in this case, it's saying, like, the board has the right to ask for that even if you want to waive it. It's the board's decision.
Okay.
Now, there's a lot of places you don't worry about, around the lake and hay hills.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no. It's just, it's just that that section talks about how we can ask for additional information if we feel it's necessary. But the only thing that's called out is an example of a stormwater report. I'm just kind of curious for all the things that we could ask for, why that?
Somebody tries to avoid. It's not fun.
511. Oh, you know what? Never mind. I already read it. I'm confused as why one has a form, why I have to picture this. All right, any other comments on this one, on this document? All right. Take a look through the draft appendices. I think it's the other documents. Am I going to have more pullouts on this one?
Two things. The edits are in red. And I've put this into a fillable form. So if you're looking online, it'll show like a bluish purple box, which will allow you to just type in your response. But if you print it out, it'll remain white, so you can write it out tissue.
Looking at the signature page. Maybe it'd be simplified a little bit instead of saying trust corp company name, just say entity name.
And that's the one in appendix one?
Yeah.
It's on page 44.
Do you find it helpful from an administrative standpoint on special permit development compact statement? Hasn't really written A on all of them?
It is, they would write NA if it doesn't apply. They would check it if it applies.
And I just give it a, you know, would actually state, mostly more be writing NAs for a lot of the stuff. But I didn't know if that could be helpful for you.
These aren't the most helpful for me, so I look at it more holistically. Like, I'll see, like, okay, they talk about water, they talk about gross conditions, they talk about the building. I don't, and I use it more as like a mental checklist instead of like going through. But they have it.
So, Michael, on the application, page three before, the required for special permit variances and accessory apartment application. And in the sentence, it reads, please initial, we try to think this is what we're just talking about, the second sentence. If any item is not included, provide attached a written, I think that we should probably rephrase that. What we really want is a written justification, right, that's going to be attached. So we provide attached, there's something missing, is it?
Yes, I can rewrite that.
Yeah. I would just say, please attach.
Please provide.
Please provide, something like that, yeah.
On the request for petition withdrawal. Would would anyone ever request that it was granted with prejudice? I understand that we might say it has to be with prejudice, I'm starting at like, it seems odd to give them the choice to be like, yeah, I want it with prejudice, so I can come back here again.
This came up in other towns recently where some people actually wanted to do it with prejudice because they were going to sell it to prevent someone else from doing it.
Oh, okay.
I am applying, so.
Well, it could last for two years, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I, it struck me as a little sort of odd, like, but you know, if there's a purpose behind it, that's fine. Otherwise, at the bottom by the vote, I think it should be zoning board appeals, not stow board appeals.
Where? Oh, yeah, I see it.
I think every other place we circle up with zoning board appeals. On the history of zoning by law, amendments and additional permits. One of the dates is in red. Is it just because it was a typo before or did it goes there?
It just said June 1996.
I went back to the. I forgot what day it was.
Yeah.
Okay.
The document didn't impact statement. There's a lot of items there. And they put NA down. Should it justify why it's an NA? Because we may not agree with it.
In the it says in the instructions, if any applicable items are missing, attach additional sheets explaining the omission. Do you want that to be? I haven't really done anything to this sheet, so I don't have any attachment. If we want to do more changes to it?
Problem is that, like, for example, you know, like, I don't know, wetland boundaries, but you might be like, there are no wetlands here. I mean, you want them to write down every single time, like, this just doesn't apply or?
Some things are that way, but other things, it's their judgment column, not.
Yeah.
So what are you advocating for?
If they're going to put an NA beside something, they should say why it's NA. It's like, there's no evidence on my property.
Yeah.
Or put a statement there where we can be saying we may require something which you were decided was didn't require.
I mean, let's say, actually, the third sentence here, if any applicable items are missing, attach additional sheet explaining the omission.
Yeah. So is an NA an omission or?
So we think about the process here. You're going to have the application in front of you, and you're going to see an NA, and you're going to, if you have a question, you ask the applicant there. What's, why is it not applicable?
Yeah.
I think it's the simplest thing, right? If they annotate it, fine.
There's a lot of unnecessary words in a way.
Clarity.
This isn't an appendix that gets used a lot. It's only for larger developments and specific types of permits at this board overall branch, so.
And do they know that because you tell them?
Yes.
That, hey, you need to fill this one out too.
So like.
Do they usually come to see you first?
Yes. Well, they usually go to the building commissioner, who says I'm not.
So, well, if that's the case, I mean, do we have people who fill it out on their own and are like, you did that? Yeah. Oh, really?
They ask to do the minimum, I'm sure.
I mean, because if that's the case, we could theoretically put at the very beginning, like, instead of it saying, please complete, we could say, like.
This is required?
No, I was going to say, upon request of, I don't know, the building commissioner on request of plan, bar, and staff.
In appendix one, under additional requirements versus the applications. There, that first lines, the other one is required.
Required for that one. Oh, okay. Never mind.
So.
So. How many of these do you get in a year? How many of these do you get in a year?
Last room just got one.
Okay.
So, and that was for stowaways.
I was going to say, yeah.
The driving reach.
Okay.
None.
Is there supposed to be a, just an undercurrent that's a, on that page, two family blocks, that's supposed to be a space, need a dash in family?
That's, actually, I need to check to see if that actually is applicable. But there's, I believe there should be a dash or a space between that because of the one.
Anyone have any other thoughts about the draft appendices?
So I make a motion that we approve the draft ZBA rules and regulations as edited.
Second.
We don't need a motion for it now because we discussed that we need a public hearing for it now, and then at the public hearing, you can do the vote to group.
Excellent. So do we have to say anything about agreeing to what we just did?
No, because it's the working draft. Technically, we're not going to vote until later, so, all right. Unless there's any objection over this way, I'd like to suggest that we schedule this for consideration and approval at the next public hearing.
We still have sections to do, though.
Oh, fair, good point. The guidance. We're going to do that in two pieces.
I believe we talked about making that a policy.
Oh, a policy, that's right.
Doesn't need to be, which would be separate from it, but it would be housed with the rules and regulations on the ZBA website.
Right.
Oh, okay. So we can approve, yeah, so.
So.
All right, so let's go ahead and put this on. Unless I'm going to have some objections.
Whatever the protocol is.
So I think we could do, actually, do a motion to set the public hearing day and time. I would suggest March 3rd at 7:30.
So make a motion that we review and approve this document on the March?
3rd.
3rd. At what time? Did we need a time cert?
7:30.
At 7:30.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? You're none. All in favor of scheduling it as noted?
Right.
All right. The last item is, actually, before we do that, I'm going to ask, why is that?
Because there might be a administrative review and approval at 7:15.
Okay, we'll talk about that. That's okay. All right. With that, we have the proposed shed bylaw that Ernie put together. I know Andy had put, had submitted some editing comments, and I did as well.
So before we do that, can you just review this memorandum that you sent?
Yes.
Um, so in summary, Valerie and I were talking, and it is outside this board's authority to propose actual bylaw amendments. And instead of proposing amendments, we've presented two different options. Um, one is to send a memo to the planning board, and the second is to do a policy, and with the policy, we can incorporate that into the one that David is going to be writing.
So how does the policy become binding?
It does not become, it comes priming on this board in that you would have to follow what you set out to do.
And how do you enforce it if it's not a bylaw?
We can't, we can't set any of those parameters or even define yet.
Well.
I understand that, I mean, is planning boards broader to do that? As a citizen, I can submit it to the planning board.
Yes, so as this board, we cannot discuss proposing amendments to the bylaw unless we're talking about that there is an issue with the bylaw or that it's not working in a specific way. We cannot give the planning board a solution, but we can say, tell the planning board, we've experienced this outcome with the bylaw, we believe it's not the intention that you were looking for, we would suggest that you review it and possibly make amendments so that it clarifies it for us and the public. We can't define what they have, should do, because that's outside of the jurisdiction of this board.
So this has been around for a long time, the shed issue, and when I was on the planning board, we discussed it. We couldn't come up with a solution.
And they apparently don't have an appetite for it either, but, you know, procedurally, this is out of our control, you shouldn't do anything with it.
So let me ask a question about option two.
Yeah.
Because I mean, option one is basically begging the planning board to fix it.
Right.
Option two is to establish a policy that outlines when a special permit is needed or not needed, but how does that? I'm just trying, I'm trying to figure out if there's any teeth to that, is that, are, do we, do we pass a policy which is essentially a message to the building commissioner to say, hey, building commissioner, you don't need to come to us because we've determined this, but theoretically, he could say, I don't agree with you, we can kick it back to you anyways, anyways.
So basically regarding sheds, any application for that would not come to this board, and it would not come to mine?
Take the shed conversation out, take the policy conversation, that's what we're trying to adjudicate here. We, we put in a policy that says blah, 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 blah. If we can't enforce it, what merit does it have?
We, the way that the policy would be written would be using things that we can reference as case law or other laws to say, this is our, we have received this information, and this is our stance on it.
But theoretically, you're right, theoretically, though. And I'm not trying, like, the point of this is just a challenge, I'm just trying to make.
Yeah, well, this is just to understand.
Right, because like, the, the idea, you know, the other policy that we talked about in terms of special permits and variances, that's really to provide guidance to the public, for the shed, I mean, theory, I'm going to cut to the chase, I don't want to waste time, um, and resources developing a policy that frankly, we could just decide, either the building commissioner could say, I'm glad it's your policy, I don't really care. And then second of all, that the board could simply go, we issued a policy, but we also don't, I mean, I mean, you know, I mean, like, a new board could come along going, I'm glad that that was a policy, but we don't care.
You don't need busy work, per se, I'm not trying to be condescending, if it's work that we don't need to do or we can't use to do our job, then it's, it's not an add, right, there's no benefit.
I mean, the flip side is, if an applicant came before us and said, according to your policy, this should be okay, and we said, nah, we changed our mind, could they use the policy to bind the board? And say, well, now you're contradicting yourself, and therefore, your current decision is unreasonable. And I'm sorry to play the game of hypotheticals here, you know.
But you have to have the conversation, because if there's merit to this thing, and it works, okay.
Yeah.
But if it's something that we're causing more work because of whatever we're doing here, then we shouldn't do that.
It's the same thing, and the sheds keep coming up. Every time, we have a lot of things come for us, sheds on them, and there's the bylaw doesn't address them, and it's known not to address them.
So what if we make an application for sheds and put these kind of characteristics in the application? And use that as a means of helping to guide somebody through the process?
There would need to be some law that would base that on.
By the way, it's a building code requirement, it's not a state law requirement. The sheds, being less than two hundred feet, no building permit required, that's not a state law. A state law is a, references a building code, that's all. Okay, if you look at the mass general law, there is nothing about sheds in there.
I mean, theoretically, I mean, theoretically, sheds shouldn't come before us. The building commissioner should deal with it all the time, right? I mean, and as, as, as we have seen in the past, like.
Yeah, unless they appeal this decision.
Which is fine, if they want to appeal a decision, I mean, we can, we've taken appeals, that's, that's okay. I mean, the reason to ask first, the reason to ask for, the reason why it's a problem needing a solution is if the building commissioner chooses not to actually act in that manner, thus we get flooded with these. But theoretically, like, he should be the gate, he or she should be the gatekeeper, right?
Well.
Well, it's the first stop.
In practice, usually, I will meet with someone and determine if they need a special permit or not. Or Frank will, the building commissioner will send them up and say, can you interpret if one is needed or not? And he and I will have that conversation as to whether one is needed, and then we'll send the applicant out to go do whatever they need, whether that be a building permit or a special permit through the Z B A. If nothing is needed from the Z B A, I don't tell this board because it's not needed.
Yeah, good.
So, I mean, I'm in communication with the building department near the daily. So, we.
Let me just ask kind of curiosity, like, I don't know, or, you know, the past number of months, I know you mentioned a bad time period, but like, how many applications or how many requests do you have for sheds on a stretch?
Um, we haven't gotten any in a while, I'd say.
We had three or four last year.
There was, yeah, there was four last year, and outside of that, there probably are six or seven others that didn't come to this board.
The other thing is, for sheds, it's kind of unreasonable to require them to meet the rigor setbacks. Thirty-five feet from side yard and forty rear yard.
Yeah, that might be true, but.
Yeah. I know, but it needs to be specified in a bylaw that it's reasonable to put in a different setback. And I went with one foot because a fence can be one foot from the property line, right? And a small shed could fit right in a corner without a problem, that's how it usually ends up. And as it get larger, they now become a large obstacle to look at, and you want it closer to the main structure.
It feels like we're trying to solve a problem we can't solve.
But the planning board should have come up and addressed it, because we do get in touch with it.
So in that case, if it's, it's the planning board's jurisdiction, do we take option one and write a recommendation as to please update the bylaw to do something, whatever the words are?
I mean, is there a down, I mean, is there a downside in doing that? I mean, the worst case scenario is that you reject it or ignore it.
Yeah, well, I agree with that.
Well, I don't, I don't see any downside, that's a lot of other communities, even outside of Massachusetts offering, where the Z B A will notify the planning board of when zoning doesn't meet its intent. So I don't see any harm in doing so, and since the planning department, we cut staff both boards, we can make sure that even if it's not the answer, one board is looking for a response that's not provided.
So we can send a memorandum to the planning department, but we can't put any specifications or dimensions in it. Just put some notion that we need something to be addressed, or whatever the right words are there, right? It's like shape, size, color, blah, blah, blah.
Could we include that if it's kind of specifying how it's not working within zoning?
We can provide examples of how it wasn't working, but I can't say change this.
Right, we're sort of not with the examples set myself, right, to raise issues.
So we can, is there kind of like a boil plate model, maybe we could just say, uh, planning board, please look at the shed, sheds?
There's, I'd have to write one up.
Yeah.
But I can do that, have it prepared for the next meeting, or you can take a vote to authorize me to send one on behalf of the board.
Memo will authorize Michael to write a memo to planning board identifying problems with sheds, a second there. We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion?
Are there any points that you would like me to make in this memo that I did not already discuss?
You covered, you know, there's also a case law that says you can da, 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 la, and, uh, I think there should be some limits on it, but, uh, and if the planning board is going to hear it, then I will definitely go to the public hearing and voice my position.
Can you provide some examples there?
Yeah.
We actually need to vote, uh, there's a motion to sign the vote, um, any for the discussion? Very none, all veto. And if you can just sort of write a copy.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. And with that, that's all we have, so in terms of looking ahead, um, we have a few other dates, uh, coming up in March, April, and May, um. Is there anything on the horizon, other than apparently this one said fifty, what's this, the top, without going into the details of that, so? Um, what's the?
This would be for fifty-six Harvard Road, the dance studio.
Oh, yeah.
There was one condition that required a plan modification.
Right.
Um, so I've been in communication with the applicant about that over the last few weeks, and um, I got a few things in today, so.
Great.
Um, we'll review that at the next meeting.
I don't want to feel that, huh?
Uh, there are no appeals.
Okay, all right, so that we had seven fifteen, seven thirty can be the, um, the, uh, vote on the amended rules and appendices.
Yes.
Okay, um, and then we'll talk about the draft policy after that, and I mean, think about if we need to go in, if, if there's a need to discuss the judicial decision, and so we can tack on an executive session afterwards. So, and we can talk about that, and, uh.
We should review our executive minutes, we've reviewed some in the past, then release them.
Yes.
Because there's very few of them should be, have any problem now.
The one other, um, topic, um, to potentially talk about the next meeting, um, is, what's the section number again?
Was it, or your email?
Yeah.
Nine point six, something.
In section nine, there's that provision that says every year, quote, uh, we shall review special permits, which I'm fairly certain has never happened.
Well, we review.
Okay, it hasn't rarely, uh.
On the planning board, that'd be one.
Yeah, and so there, there's, I, I, I wanted to just as a topic discussion, just discuss that particular provision for two purposes. One is, do we recommend that it gets amended, uh, you know, or, I don't know, if, because I, I don't like the mandatory nature of it, you know, if it's not actually being done. But the second is, is that in light of the fact that frankly, we've got a little bit of dip here in terms of applications coming in, are there actually special permits that have been out for a year that we would like to have reviewed?
You know, there's something, we could review them, but there's not much we can do about it, that's the problem.
Perhaps.
Bring them in, you're in violation.
Well, I mean, it's.
It's up to the building commissioner to enforce them.
It, it is, but at the same time, the provision's in there, so, um, you know.
I'm sorry, we can get discussed at the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I'm going to ask for that to be brought on the agenda, even if there's not much to discuss, just think about how we might be able to use the provision, if it's useful, what we would be able to look at, I don't know.
Could be stated, if there's any complaints and we will review.
I mean, that's it, like, if, if there are thoughts about.
So with regard to that, does anybody have any perspective on the original intent?
So I think, because it's got to be on the agenda to discuss, this, those are all questions to talk about.
Okay.
I just wanted to flag it as something that I'm going to be asking to be put on the agenda.
Okay.
I assume there's nothing for the, uh, April seventh at this point either.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I guess I'll just ask, real, what'd you say?
It's a good year.
Um, I guess I'll just ask real quickly, does anyone have any topics or things that they want to discuss, they want to review, um, either in March or April, we've got the time to actually, you know, kennels, what was a, what was a friendly topic to discuss, um. And if people don't, then that's okay, but I would think about things that we have time to look at, and then, you know, shoot Michael a note saying, hey, you know what, here's a topic we haven't looked at forever, even if it's just for cleaner purposes, because as we all know, then there'll be that rash of hearings where, rash of meetings where it's like hearing, 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 where I can't actually like, you know, get out in front of some of this stuff, so, just wanted to flag that. Um, anything else right now? That's all, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion, and we adjourn the meeting at seven fifty.
I was talking about.
The motion, we have a second.
Can't have an associate second.
Uh.
All seconds.
Okay, the motion, we have a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, get this, okay.
Six people, sorry, that's okay, so, um, I mean, I am concerned that technically, there's two minutes until seven fifty.
Well, by the time we get to this.
We have a motion, we have a second, uh, any discussion, hearing done, all in favor of adjournment?
All right.
Passes, meeting is adjourned, thank you so much, we'll see you in March.
Makes it fifty-two minute late.